See if you'll lead us in the flag salute, please.
Be glad to. Please join me in this flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please, Siana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent. Here. Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Siana. Tonight, we have a couple of acknowledgements and presentations. Our first one is Valley Pacific recognition for the donation of a new mower for parks.
Good evening, City Council. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Valley Pacific, who's the parent company for Renner Petroleum for their recent donation to the parks. We are, we had an older mower, our larger deck mower that had given us problems for many, many years. And so we were looking for a mower with a larger deck, which would allow us to more, more surface area and less amount of time. And so Merritt made a connection with Valley Pacific and, and reached out to them about a potential community donation. And Merritt had me identify a couple of projects and the project that they selected was their, a brand new ninety-six inch deck mower for the Parks Crew. Siana, if you wanted to share my screen, I'll pull up a pic so everybody can see it.
All right, Cameron, you should be able to share your screen.
Perfect. Can everybody see that?
No.
Yes.
There. So it's a brand new Toro Z Master. It's a zero-turn mower. It's got a rear discharge. And yeah, as you can see, it's got a very large deck, a ninety-six inch deck. Our pre, our next largest mower has a seventy-two inch deck, so this is significantly larger. This is basically a top-of-the-line mower, so we're really excited about this donation. This is almost a fifty thousand dollar mower that's being donated to Parks and Rec, so we're really excited. We've had really good luck with Toros. In fact, the last Toro we purchased, or last mower we purchased was a Toro that was purchased with Measure E funds. And so we've had really good luck with that. And so we're excited about using this new mower here. And just wanted to take a moment to thank them. We are going to be snapping some photos here. We placed orders. Should be here in a couple of weeks. And I'd love if I could snap a couple of photos with potentially some city council members so that we could send that to Valley Pacific and recognize them for their donation. So be happy to answer any questions. Merritt, if you wanted to add anything, please feel free.
Yeah, I just might say I really appreciate working with Nathan Crumb of Valley Pacific. He's the owner and very generous donation. And when we were looking at the needs, we really wanted something that the community could get a benefit out of. And having an eight-foot mower to be able to get those fields more quickly saved a lot of time. So, so we're excited about this and we're going to put some nice bumper stickers on there and, and get some other signage up there thanking him for this, this generous donation. And these mowers don't come cheap. They're very expensive. And to get a nice one like this is something that we don't have an opportunity to do every day. We have a twelve-foot mower that we've had for many years that has been a problem for the city and we haven't been able to get to repair and run properly. So this is going to be a wonderful thing for our Parks Department. So thank, thank you again to Valley Pacific.
That is.
Driver's license.
Drive that?
No, you do not. But oftentimes, we do have to ride our mowers in the streets if we're traveling to the Medians or if we're traveling from Roanoke Park where we store our mowers all the way to Newburgh Park. So that's when you actually need the driver's licenses is if you're operating a mower on the street.
And we may come back and ask the council to do a small ribbon cutting or something, just once we get the bumper stickers on there and to do a press release. But we just wanted to let you know of their generous donation and we may have to drag you guys out to the park to check it out in person once we, once it arrives.
Let you take it for a spin, maybe.
Okay, that'll be fun. Let's do it. All right. Well, thanks to Valley Pacific. That's pretty darn amazing. Our next item is a climate action plan update presented by Community Development Deputy Director Liz Story.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief presentation on the status of the climate action plan that the city staff have been involved in. You had previously, I don't know the date, a year or two ago, given, you know, acknowledgement or approval to participate in that. And so we've been meeting with, on a monthly basis with the regional planning team consisting of the county and other cities, which I'll get into. So I'm just going to give a brief introduction and then turn it over to, I think, Connor McWiggin from the county. He's been the main facilitator doing tons of heavy lifting and cat herding and things to keep the, you know, keep us together and us meeting regularly. He's been in a really good job on that. So I'm going to share the screen here. And then go over a few slides. Sorry. Let's try this one. Hey. For how to get the slide presentation moving forward.
Liz, I can pull it up on my screen and share it.
Okay, I did make a few changes, but nothing significant. So why don't you do that?
Okay, will that help? Or you could do your part and then I can pull it up for my part, because.
Well, I, yeah, it's not moving forward. So go ahead.
Okay, I will take probably thirty seconds. So my Fortuna presentation is that on my work computer, but I'm going to share the Eureka slideshow, which is basically the same exact thing. Should.
Liz, I have the one you produced earlier that you sent me if it hasn't changed from that.
Yeah, let's do that, Merritt. Sorry about this.
Perfect. Thanks, Merritt.
There are a couple of those slides have my notes on them. So when you see that, just flip through it quickly. I had some messages to you.
I'm opening it now.
Third time's a charm, Merritt.
Can you see that?
Great, thank you. Yeah, go ahead. Go forward. Okay, so yeah, the purpose of today's report is to identify or describe the plan really briefly. You know, in the climate action plan, this is our regional climate action plan, and the purpose is to identify strategies that will help mitigate GHG greenhouse gas emissions and address climate change as a result of local activities. And we'll get into more detail about what that is. And this is just a really high-level plan overview for you tonight. So I just want to point out that this is a presentation. You know, just for informational purposes to let you know what we've been involved in and what, you know, what to expect in the future. You probably will hear a little bit more about it, you know, as you're out interacting with the other jurisdictions, since this is a regional collaboration. And we'll definitely have a lot more for you to actually discuss and act on in the, in the coming months. So the goal is really just to, you know, is that a regional climate action plan will be adopted by each jurisdiction and for the purpose of reducing local greenhouse gas emissions. And also I wanted to point out that each jurisdiction will have their own adoption and public review process to fit their local needs. So this is a, you know, the county is really kind of spearheading this and the other jurisdictions, other cities are involved. But, you know, the idea is that there will be a regional plan that addresses the inventory, the gas inventory and the future emissions, but that each jurisdiction will be able to adopt their own plan. Go ahead, Merritt. And just to give you a timeline of where we're at and where we're going. So in late two thousand eighteen, the coalition was formed to work on a regional cap. And we began having monthly meetings since then. And then we've worked on the inventory and the forecast that was completed, conducted and still being tweaked here and there by RCEA. And they did the inventory for nineteen ninety and twenty fifteen. And then the measures are being created and kind of tweaked as well. And those that were feasible and relevant to Humboldt County were retained. So, you know, there was a broad, broad review of all of the available measures and then they've been kind of refined to what the draft that we have now. And we do have a first draft complete. That's still an internal document, not being published quite yet, but it's expected to be soon. And that will become a public review document for, you know, the public and for the council and to take comment on that. And then sort of concurrently with that, the SEQA document, I think the SEQA document is actually coming first, is being prepared and reviewed, and that will be, we anticipate in the fall that that will be circulated. The county is acting as the lead agency. I'll have more on the SEQA component down the next slide. And then finally, public hearings and, you know, with potentially ideally with a cap adoption. So SEQA is required for development projects to analyze for greenhouse gas impacts. And so the greenhouse gas, the climate action plan is a project under SEQA. So it is subject to, you know, the California Environmental Quality Act. And the purpose of SEQA is to inform the public of potentially significant impacts and to mitigate where necessary. So the SEQA guidelines specifically require greenhouse gas emissions to be analyzed in SEQA documents for development projects. So this would normally mean that emission, you know, emissions calculations and mitigation measures. So with a, with a regional cap and with the, you know, with the environmental document that is prepared for that cap, two projects can tier off of it what's called a qualified cap. So that's, a qualified cap is one that meets the state regulations. We're not quite ready for that one, Merritt, or go ahead, Merritt. Otherwise, a project will be required to review greenhouse gas emissions on a case-by-case basis. Merritt, you can go ahead and go to the one after this. Go ahead, move it forward. Okay, so yeah, the SEQA issue is something that we're still working out and we'll have more for you when, you know, when it comes to, we're not sure exactly how that's going to play out, if it's going to affect, you know, whether, what kind of a cap the city or a city adopts or may not, or may choose not to adopt. And then how the SEQA gets prepared for that. So that's something that we're still working on refining and a lot more information for you on that. So at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Connor McWiggin. And Connor, you can give, why don't you give a couple, a little bit of information about yourself, how you, you know, your role in the cap.
Sure. Thank you, Liz. My name is Connor. I'm a planner with the county. And I actually started with the county through a fellowship through the state agency to do a, or a nonprofit to do this climate action plan work. And I've stuck around and been working on this for about little under three years. And yeah, I helped coordinate the main project team, which consists of staff from the county and staff from Redwood Coast Energy Authority and then Liz and Merritt have been involved and then other staff from the cities. And here we have the greenhouse gas inventory for the year twenty fifteen. This is basically a snapshot of where emissions come from here in Humboldt County. And there's, there's no really big surprises here. You see that transportation is the number one source of emissions. And stationary combustion, which is the next pie slice down to the left. That basically means the combustion of fossil fuels like propane and natural gas. The primarily it's building energy consumption. And then you can see some other sources of emissions. The two other significant ones would be electricity consumption and livestock. And I'll mention that this plan has some, I'll get to that later, actually. So this is the breakdown of, thanks, Merritt, you were spot on changing the slide there. This is the breakdown of emissions by jurisdiction. And this is pretty similar to the population share for each jurisdiction. Though the county's share here is a little higher than its population share because of all of the livestock operations that are in the county. You can see Fortuna is is the yellow slice there that seven percent of emissions could be attributed to activities in Fortuna. Next slide, please. So these are the state greenhouse gas targets and it's important to take a look at these because this is the real impetus for us doing this work. There's not a specific requirement to do a climate action plan. Liz kind of talked about the SEQA aspect and the incentives or the reasons why local, some of the reasons why local governments would want to create a climate action plan. And it's important to note here that the state has just taken this really ambitious leadership role when it comes to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. It's not only a leader in the country, it's a leader throughout the world. And so we're kind of following in the state's footsteps here and a lot of other jurisdictions throughout the state, cities and counties have done the same. And these are the state's greenhouse gas targets. Looking at the twenty twenty target, they already reached that one according to the way they account emissions. The twenty thirty target is forty percent below nineteen ninety levels and the twenty forty-five target is carbon neutrality. Next slide, please. And yeah, we're going to recommend, I believe, when we present this draft cap that local cities and counties adopt this as the greenhouse gas target for their portion of the cap. This is the twenty thirty state target. Next slide, please. These are some of the different categories of measures that we have included in the current draft climate action plan. These are sort of like different strategies you could take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Land use planning that has an impact on the built environment, which influences our transportation choices. So these types of policies or measures in the climate action plan, they're geared towards the more urban core areas of Humboldt County and finding ways to incentivize more mixed-use development, for example, and other forms of development that are linked to alternative forms of transportation or just kind of guiding, planning in a way that makes walking and biking a little easier, for example. Low-carbon transportation, that's almost the most important thing. If you're talking just about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, transportation was the biggest slice of the pie as we saw. And so switching out traditional gas and diesel-powered vehicles for electric vehicles is a way to reduce emissions. And there are ways that the cities and the county can do that with their own vehicle fleets. And there are ways that the city and the county can do that by making it easier for people who choose to buy electric vehicles to, you know, have charging stations more readily available. And the state again has really ambitious goals for electric vehicles. So that's, it's just kind of the way of the future in California, at least. And so we want to plan for that and find a way to help our community transition to, to that reality. And of course, it's not, it's just for people who, yeah, anyway. So the next category is efficiency of buildings and facilities. That refers to a suite of energy efficiency measures, basically just saving the use of electricity and other, in natural gas and propane. That's very important in terms of reducing emissions. On the other side of energy would be making the source of energy more renewable. So renewable energy generation, rooftop solar is an example. On another example would be more utility-scale solar projects, which are going through in the, in my office right now, more and more people are coming in and asking about building a solar farm on their property. So yeah, we're looking at ways to make that more feasible and to streamline permitting processes there. And then waste prevention, reduction and diversion, as well as carbon sequestration. These are two other categories of actions in our plan. Next slide, Merritt. Thank you. This is just the high-level process for, for us wrapping up this climate action plan. So we want to present this first draft that we have alongside a series of public workshops and we would love to come down to Fortuna. I don't believe we had a chance to come to Fortuna the last round of workshops. We didn't go up all throughout the county, but so we'll have, host these workshops along with the release of the draft cap. And then, once we have a draft cap, the SEQA process will begin. And throughout all this, we'll be meeting monthly with staff from the jurisdictions as we have done for a few years now. And ultimately, the goal is for, as Liz mentioned, for each jurisdiction to adopt the, basically their own climate action plan that is sort of part of this regional effort. So through this regional effort, we're developing a big set of measures. We're doing all the data collection and analysis. And then we're going to help each jurisdiction craft their own set of greenhouse gas reduction measures and ultimately adopt hopefully eight distinct climate action plans as part of this process. I believe that's all I have for you. And I'm here. We also have Liz is here, obviously, and we have some other staff here to answer any questions that may come up. Thanks.
Thanks, Connor. Yeah, we'll hand it back to the mayor and the council.
Can I add one thing? Presentation, one of the things we've been doing on a staff level is trying to meet and think about what things we can realistically bring in and what kind of a timeline they'd apply to the city. So we've had several departments engaged in trying to identify what types of measures would be appropriate and suitable for the city and also that we can afford.
Does anyone have any questions for Liz or Connor?
I have a quick question. Just a curiosity, why were the nineteen ninety GHG levels chosen as the target?
We did that just so we could line up with the state's target. We're, we could have used the twenty fifteen levels, but by using nineteen ninety levels, we're adopting exactly what the state adopted and that sets us up for, to be able to use this plan for the SEQA streamlining benefit that was talked about.
And you don't know why the state chose nineteen ninety?
That's actually a great question. I, I could have maybe answered that a couple of years ago, but does anyone, Aisha or Jerome or Katie? Do you know what, why that is? There are some.
This is, yeah, this is Aisha. Anyone else can, can add some color in here, but there's really minimal data. So I would assume that if we were trying to set something, you know, before nineteen ninety, we just wouldn't have the data available to do so.
And Mike's question was about the state choosing, like why they choose.
Right. So I guess I shouldn't have said we, but, but the state, even where, where most of the data comes from. So I would imagine that the, my, my educated guess would be that the state didn't, wasn't collecting greenhouse gas emissions data before nineteen ninety, so they couldn't form a baseline for themselves. So I think that's, again, that's like my educated guess at why the state chose nineteen ninety.
That makes sense to me.
That's the same information I heard in another update, that, that was when they had measurable data that made sense.
Yeah, and even then, it's, it's still pretty spotty, but it's the closest we, we could get, or at least that the state is able to get. And in our own nineteen ninety inventory, we, we had to do a lot of digging to, to get information and form that inventory. But I'm glad to hear that that lines up with what you've, you've heard elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question about how long this plan is good for once it's implemented.
So once it's adopted, it's the, the target year or the, I guess, the planning horizon would be twenty thirty. And we would look to update the climate action plan to have, you know, a plan update with a future target year beyond twenty thirty, sometime between now, between adoption and the year twenty thirty. So essentially, this is a plan that intends to carve out actions for the next, you know, eight or so years.
On your pie graph, it showed electricity as the third highest cause of greenhouse gases. And with transportation being number one, is that going to be a reduction or just a swap on the pie graph as we get more and more electric vehicles?
Yeah, that's a great question. In Humboldt County, we have Redwood Coast Energy Authority and they, I'm sure many on your council are familiar with that agency. They purchase the energy for Humboldt County consumers. And so their goal is to completely go one hundred percent renewable by twenty twenty-five. So if, if they achieve that goal, then the increase in electricity use from electric vehicles would have much less of a impact in terms of carbon because the power that's getting fed into, well, the power that is being purchased on behalf of Humboldt County's customers would be a hundred percent renewable.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Liz and Connor. We appreciate your time tonight. Moving on to Brendan, who has a report for the Redwood Way Improvements Project.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Siana, could you allow me to take the screen over?
You should be able to share your screen.
Perfect. Let me know when I am fully up and running here.
You're good.
Okay, very good. Well, again, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I wanted to take this opportunity to give a brief refresher on one of our largest, largest public works projects this year, which is the Redwood Way Improvements Project. And in real timely fashion, it actually started today, which is exciting. So in this presentation, I wanted to give a, a brief project overview to remind folks who maybe are seeing this for the first time, go over a funding summary for the project, provide a summary of some of our recent project activity at the staff level, and also a quick look ahead at the anticipated construction schedule. So the Redwood Way Improvements Project is primarily a pavement rehabilitation project with some additional bike and pedestrian improvements as well. The project covers approximately, covers approximately three-quarters of a mile of Redwood Way, which begins just east of Safeway and extends all the way to Rountreeville Road. So the project footprint is generally shown here in the limits of this orange polygon. And extends all the way to Ronderville Road. So the project footprint is generally shown here in the limits of this orange polygon. A large portion of Redwood Way within these limits is going to receive pavement rehabilitation through the excavation and replacement of failing asphalt, of which. I assure you there is plenty. And then the entirety of the road in this area will be overlaid for a smoother, stronger final surface finish, which is anticipated to last for quite some time. In addition to the paving, the project will include two pedestrian improvements, including a new enhanced crosswalk near the Wood Creek Apartments. Similar to those that we've seen go in along Main Street and the Boulevard in recent years. And then sidewalk infill in between the new Twin Creek subdivision there on the east side of the Strong Street Bridge, extending all the way up to the bus stop at St. Joseph's Drive. Lastly, due to a competitive bid climate. And some additional funding that we were able to secure from the Humboldt County Association of Governments, the project will include shoulder widening for all portions of Redwood Way shown here in blue. So which is both on the north and south side of the road, primarily on the east side of the Strong Street Bridge. This will allow for a full five foot wide shoulder on both sides of the road in between the Boulevard and Ronderville Road, which can provide for a nice walking or bike lane. Surface connecting those two main roads. So moving down onto a funding of summary, this project is being delivered by three distinct funding sources. The first top two here shown in the table are grant sources, the first of which is a one point one five million dollar allocation from the state transportation improvement program. Which is administered through Caltrans. This is money that the city secured in two thousand and eighteen, which was the catalyst for beginning work on the project. The second is an approximately fifty thousand dollar allocation from the HCOGS two percent set aside for bike and pedestrian improvement projects. Which was only recently applied for and will be crucial in allowing the city to fully deliver the amount of shoulder widening we'd like to as part of the project. The last funding source shown here is from Fortuna Fund one forty, which is the city's traffic impact fee. This fund has been used to complete the engineering and environmental phases of the project, which is currently under budget. And will be continued to be used in the construction engineering phase if no surplus funding is available from the STIP allocation. Since this item was last presented to the council in March as a recommendation for construction contract award, staff have been working and quite busy getting ready. For project construction. During the last few months, we've been working primarily on contracting with the prime construction contractor Mercer Frazier. And finalizing our front, our funding agreements with Caltrans using the resolution that was passed at the time of contract award. We've also been working with Mercer Frazier and our engineer GHD to finalize the footprint of the project with. Which with the help from HCOG will include more shoulder widening than originally included in the final project bid package. Lastly, staff and our contractor have been working closely with several agencies, including. The apartments there locally, the hospital EMS services, transit agencies and many others to help them in understanding our project and schedule. So that they can best adjust their own activities during the duration of our project. So speaking of duration, I wanted to move lastly here to an overview of the first draft of the construction contractor schedule. So the key dates I'd like to call out, of course, are today, which is the day that the project broke ground officially on Redwood Way. And the last of which is July twenty third, which is the last day of the, of the construction contract to which we have Mercer Frazier under. So over the next several weeks, the contractor will be working in the area primarily prepping the site for installing new concrete curb, curb ramps, sidewalks and curbs. This will be followed by approximately one month of shoulder widening, pavement replacement and pavement overlay. Leading into July, the project will conclude with final utility adjustments, striping and signage. In regards to traffic control and what the public can anticipate for these activities. These two blocks of time shown here in black boxes are anticipated to result in intermittent and localized traffic control. Not so unlike what many of us have experienced on Redwood Way over the past year, year and a half with various contractors working in the area on the Twin Creeks subdivision. The activity shown here in the red box, which is the majority of June, when shoulder widening and paving work will occur. Is anticipated to have single lane controlled traffic with flaggers and or pilot cars. And it's going to have some minor traffic control on side streets entering Redwood Way. And most people during this time should expect up to five minute delays as the work progresses. So with that, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and, and hopefully some of this information was helpful and, and. Your understanding moving forward as we continue with this project will of course continue to provide updates and, and monthly reports and. Via social media and, and other outlets like that. And I'd be more than happy to, uh, bring in new members or. Or other folks that are interested out to the site for a site tour as we're doing construction. So. With that, thank you very much for your time. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Brendan. Any questions from council?
I just had one, wasn't there a, um, barrier removal at the entrance to Renner Drive as part of this project?
We will be doing, um. The entrance to Renner Drive, which is the intersection of Renner Drive and St. Joseph's, will be installing new curb ramps on all four corners there as we'll be extending new paving up. We're required through ADA code to replace all those curb ramps. So there will be some improvements up there for ADA.
I think though what Jeremy meant is Renner Drive is blocked off from Ronderville Road right now. I thought you said we were gonna unblock that. So there was like a second path of travel for traffic.
Oh, correct. So we are planning on having, there is that small access gate right there. We are working with our contractor and with emergency services to allow that as a secondary access point for emergency vehicles and. Right now, our thoughts to do emergency vehicles only, we strongly considered allowing local traffic to be able to access through that area, but. With how constricted the entrances and due to a number of other things, including like a concrete island that's in Ronderville Road out in front of there. We ultimately decided to limit it just to emergency vehicles because otherwise it's just an unsafe situation for regular ingress and egress for the residents there. So. We're hoping to kind of replace that secondary access by having our contractor move a little bit more quickly. And to have a little bit less intensive traffic control operations than we originally anticipated.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I got one, uh. Is Merrick kind of touched on this today, but I just wanted to confirm in my own mind. The traveled way, you, you're planning on doing a gr- inlay grind and inlay? And then overlay out to the, to the curb and gutter line or the shoulders? Is that how it, or are you gonna do a complete R and R?
We are going to do on about forty percent of the traveled way of four inch grind out and inlay. With larger HMA to bring the surface back to what it looks like now, but just repairing all the alligatoring. And then in two lifts, we're going to be doing an overlay with edge grinding where we need to match existing concrete and then just straight overlay where we have. Open shoulder areas of which is actually the majority of the project. And we'll be doing that in two surface or in two lifts. The first one to act as a leveling course to smooth out across all the various trenches and, you know, um. And digouts that will be replacing and the second to be the final fully smooth surface course.
Okay, thank you. There was some discussion about that with, uh, some of the chamber people today. So I'll relay, thank you.
And I'm happy to field any questions in the future if you want to shoot them my way.
I got your number written down.
Thank you, Brendan. Any other questions? All right, we appreciate you being here and giving us an update. It's always nice to know what's going on before people start calling us and complaining.
Certainly.
All right, moving on to oral comments from the public. If anyone is on our Zoom meeting and would like to address the council, now would be the time. You can, um, raise your hand in the. Zoom format if you know how to do that. Siana helps me watch for that. Um, anyone else, if you want to call the number on your screen, we will get to your comment. And while we're waiting to see if anyone does that, we'll go ahead and, uh, look at our consent calendar. So if you would like to address the council, please call the number on your screen. We have nine items on our consent calendar consisting of council minutes and all of our department reports. Administrative, community development, finance, parks and rec, police, public works, river lodge and report of disbursements. Would anyone like to pull anything? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
I don't see anyone on Zoom with their hand up. Siana, did we get any calls from the public?
No, I don't have any members of the public wanting to make a comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment and move on to our city council business. The first one is, uh, consider allowing Fortuna High School senior graduate pictures on Fortuna Boulevard median. Staff report, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Council. Uh, so. Last year, we, uh, went through this process where during a COVID year, uh, Fortuna Union High School, uh, seniors were not able to have a graduation ceremony, therefore. Uh, city council was kind enough to approve, uh, them eight, being able to put, uh, graduating senior signs out on the Fortuna Boulevard for the members of the public and citizens to. Uh, be able to view, uh, those seniors. Um, this year they have more seniors. There's two hundred and thirty versus a hundred and eighty last year and they are again asking. Um, if they are, uh, can get approval from city council to do this again this year, uh, through safe and sober. Uh, they are having a formal graduation ceremony on May twenty eighth. However, due to the fact that a lot of the seniors. Didn't have a very normal senior year. They wanted to be able to have an opportunity to highlight their accomplishments. Uh, by giving them some credit with their photos on the Boulevard yet again. Um, so these signs are double sided. Uh, they resemble, uh, yard sale signs. I, I included an attachment. I'm happy to share a screen if anybody wants to see what those look like, a sample. And the city does have a, an ordinance, uh, it's ordinance, uh, number two thousand seven dash six six six, sections two and three. Which basically there are restrictions on placing any signs on the medians and any signs that would go on medians do need city council approval. Uh, these signs are funded by the high school, um, and, uh, we did it last year instead of having them do it because it's a lot safer for our parks crew. Who have the high visibility gear and actually came in a little bit earlier before the Boulevard, uh, got too busy to put the signs out on the Boulevard. Same thing with the removal. We would plan to remove them, um, at the end date and then return all this to the high school for them to get to their, uh, high school seniors. Um, so the, the weeks that they'd like to have these up, uh, in my staff report, I did put Tuesday, May eighteenth through June sixth, or sorry, June first, that's a Tuesday. However, they would not be able to get the signs to us until late afternoon tomorrow. So they would go up if city council approves this tonight, Wednesday, May nineteenth through Tuesday. June first. Um, the only catch is that we would not be able to mow the, the boulevards during that timeframe and we would just be too difficult to navigate. Around two hundred and thirty signs. So the grass might get a little bit taller. However, we did mow today in anticipation of this potentially going through tonight. So that, uh, we had it nice and clean and ready for the signs if council so approves. So I'm happy to answer, answer any questions, uh, if city council has any or members of the public.
Um, let's go ahead and open public comment in case anyone wants to call in while council is talking. Um. I love that they did this last year and I don't care if they have normal graduations from here on out. I would love just to have another city tradition like this. So, um. Anyone else from the council have any questions or comments?
This is the easiest decision I've ever made as a council person, yes.
Tammy, you got drowned it out.
Oh, I, I said, I really like these two. It's fun to drive down the Boulevard, see them all.
I think it's a, uh, it's a great way of introducing our graduating seniors to our community.
And it's an opportunity to see how engaged some of those are and the projects they've undertaken and the achievements they've made.
All right, seeing no one from the public with hands raised, Siana, no calls?
None.
All right, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Parks Department to place signs of the graduating Fortuna High Union High School seniors. Um, on Fortuna Boulevard medium.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana?
Councilmember Johnson?
Think you said my name, I say yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
And I, can I ask one question of the council?
Sure.
Would you like to see this via an official change in municipal code or see this on an annual basis if high schools still wanting to pursue?
That would be awesome. Then we don't have to do this every year, right?
Yeah, and, and Cameron, if you could check back with the high school, we'll just find out if they want to continue doing this and if so, then we can per- pursue a change to the municipal code if, if the council would like to see that.
Sure, I did ask the current, uh, Safe and So- Sober Board and they said because there's a lot of rotations between all those board members on Safe and Sober that they would be able to revisit it. Every year. And I'm, I think it probably does depend on their funding as well, whether or not they have the funds. Because I think typically they do a lot of other senior activities. So assuming in the future they do have those funds and would like to do this. Um, I think that they would be really happy with city council's approval or change to the ordinance to allow them to do so. And I can let them know that.
All right, thank you. Thanks for that, Merritt. I'm moving on to our next item in road maintenance and rehabilitation account project list, resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen. Staff report, please.
Aaron Delaney, our finance director, we providing the staff report?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So. In order to be eligible for funding from the passage of SB one, uh, the city must formally adopt a list of projects to be completed. And forward that list to the California Transportation Commission, uh, by, by July first of each year. Um, this is, I think, the third year now that we've done this and, um, the, the, uh, projects, um, that we have listed as attachment A. That format has been an acceptable format to the CTC. Um, so you can see in attachment one, uh, the projects that staff is proposing is, um. Riverwalk Drive between Binsmore Drive and the overlook at the S curve. Um, and so. Um, uh, of course, uh, the city can change this list if any emergency projects arise or. Um, if there's any change in council's preference on which projects we, uh, they would like to see completed. Um, but we do have to get the initial list sent off, um, by July first, as I stated before. And so, um, it is staff's recommendation to go ahead and adopt resolution two zero two one dash sixteen. Um, and, uh, staff will forward the, the project list on to the California Transportation Commission. Um, if there's any questions with the project list, we also have, uh, Bob Natter, General Services Superintendent on who could perhaps answer any questions with, um, the projects. That are being recommended. Um, and with that, I'll pass it back off to the mayor and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Let's go ahead and open public comment. If you are on our meeting, raise your hand via the Zoom, Zoom link. If you are not on our meeting, follow the directions on your screen. Does council have any questions or comments?
I have one comment or question rather. Um, I'm curious to know how a citizen would approach the city to ask for a specific project to be considered.
I can answer that or if you want to, Aaron, but I think if they wrote a letter or an email and there's also a portal through a website, but if, if folks have concern about particular roadway. We get those types of emails quite often and then we consider them when we're, when we are doing our prioritization. So if somebody just wants to, they could email, uh, city manager or they could reach out through the city's website.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I see no hands raised on Zoom. Siana, anybody from the public? All right, hearing then.
Not at this time, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So we'll close public comment and we're ready for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Siana?
Resolution twenty twenty one dash sixteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna. Designating projects to be funded by the road maintenance and rehabilitation account during fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty two. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is consideration of amendment of the Avery Port subdivision to change the road from private to public and remove the road maintenance district. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council members. So this, uh, this amendment or this.
So this this amendment or this subject is relating to a subdivision that has been approved. It was approved on November 19th, 2018 by the City Council. It was the Cook subdivision. Now we're calling it the Avery Court subdivision since Cook doesn't own it anymore. It's owned by the owner is Abe Foker. And so the subdivision is creating eight residential lots. They're standard size. R16 zoning, so the range is 600 square feet to 9,500 square feet. And it's located south of Fortuna Boulevard, off of Alder Drive. And then this, the new road off of Alder Drive will be Alder Court. And you can see it on the aerial there. Fortuna Boulevard is at the top of the map. And you can see it'll it'll be a short, relatively short cul-de-sac with the eight lots facing, printing on it. So the applicant has been working on the subdivision improvements, which is, you know, that's a big undertaking and, you know, time and just infrastructure and things, so fulfilling the conditions of approval. And, you know, generally making progress towards all of the requirements to get the map recorded, including installation of most of the public works infrastructure utilities, fire hydrant, sidewalk and paving. So that's really standard. There's nothing, you know, out of the ordinary for this subdivision. And the road has been constructed to the city standard, the high density level land subdivision collector road. And it's been inspected by the City Engineer and the Public Works Department. And everything has been, you know, appropriate. So the approval, the resolution is Resolution 2018-36. And included in the conditions of approval is the requirement for establishment that that new road, Alder Court, be established as a private road and establishment of a road maintenance or a special assessment district to establish a road maintenance fee that would be assessed on the property, on each property owner of those eight lots. And it would be an annual assessment and deposited into the City Road Fund. And the applicant is requesting that the subdivision be amended to designate the road instead as a public right of way and to eliminate the Road Maintenance District to so that it would be, you know, as a public road, it would be funded, the maintenance would be funded as all the public roads are in the city from the general fund and the other various road funds. So the Public Works Director is in agreement after consideration based on the small size of the road. Typically, a road this size is not in a, you know, it's not typically designated as a private road nor assessed a maintenance fee. Typically, that would be a significant subdivision that would have that kind of a private road and a road maintenance district. And that would be, for example, Forest Hills Road off of Huffman over by Kenmar and Burnerville Road. That's a private road with an assessment that, you know, the property owners collect and maintain their own road. And that's a gated community as well. So the public doesn't normally drive on that road. And so that's what the difference is with this road. It's much shorter. The cost is typically going to be more nominal in comparison relatively to, you know, a larger road. So that's all I have. So the recommendation is from staff that that resolution be amended to delete the private road designation that would make it a public right of way and to remove the maintenance district requirement. So I'll pass that back to the council.
Thank you, Liz. We'll open public comment while the council has our discussion. If you would like to comment, follow the instructions on your screen or raise your hand. If you are on the Zoom meeting, does anyone from the council have any questions or comments?
I do. I'm I've got a question and a comment. I'm just curious as to why this subdivision was set up originally with regard to a private road as opposed to making it a public road, like what normal subdivisions would be?
And I I think I can remember this. It's been some time. But originally, the applicant had proposed that. We were talking about some of the different road improvements. But really what ended up, you know, including it as an assessment benefit district for such a small street really is inconsistent with what we've done in the city in the past. And it it was a city requested change. I think Liz might have noted that it was an applicant change. But what we want, it was really a staff requested change by myself to to make this change just because there's a pretty high density of houses, low traffic impact. And, you know, I think in short, you know, we changed our mind and it's a lot of effort. It's difficult for a small subdivision like this when there's not a greater homeowners association with a lot of different maintenance tasks to take on, putting together this road funding. And again, it's a well-constructed road. There's a there's there's a high number of houses, very short road with a low traffic index. So it doesn't present a large maintenance responsibility to the city.
If I understand you correctly, then Merritt, the city was the one who requested that this be a private road originally?
That's right.
Okay, I went out there yesterday or the day before and looked. And I mean, it's a great looking subdivision, great looking road. The all the improvements are in, it looks like. And so I was just curious as to why it it came about as a as a private.
It wasn't going to be a private road. We were really just trying to think of ways, you know, as as I think a lot of the council has heard, we're in a deficit for road maintenance. We need over a million dollars a year to be really be able to do what we need to do. And so we just want to be, we were probably being a little bit overly cautious in this circumstance. And we weren't proposing a private road, but that they set up a separate fund and fund the long-term maintenance of this road. So it was always going to be, there's going to be a public easement for ingress address and public utilities. But again, we changed our mind, but we just really want to be careful about creating more of a liability for roads than the city can afford. So I think we just will take each one on a case-by-case basis. And our initial indication or our initial inclination really was just we changed our mind on this one.
Okay, I I think either way, with the housing climate, the way it is, he's going to be able to sell these houses no matter what.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Just, I got one for for Merritt or Brendan. And looking at the improvement plan, since this is built on floodplain and is the subgrade and a cross-section such that it'll handle a disposal truck which runs, you know, near gross or over gross because they're allowed to every week, make three turning movements on it.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in on that one, Mike. So the, you know, the requirement for this and other subdivisions that we've been enforcing more recently is that to do the design of the road, they need to do it for the design condition, which is a traffic index and a and a vehicle load, which is typically driven by a garbage truck or something, large size, something with a lot of weight, a lot of axles. And so what this engineer who developed the plans actually did is go out and did full R-value testing and did subgrade testing to develop a full structural section. And as somebody who witnessed the construction on site and and has it, as it kind of unfolded over the year, I would very comfortably say that there's more rock in there than is even required by that. And it should be a quite a stout road and certainly much, much stronger than those that were built during the last boom of of subdivisions in the in the 90s and the 2000s locally. Many of those roads, which have held up pretty well, so.
If I could add to one additional benefit for this road, if if you look at it, it's one of our primary access points for the overflow channel for the Rona Creek Flood Control Project. And and so if if I just shared my screen so you can see it. But if you look along, I think that's the westerly side. This is where our overflow channel is. So this is a key access point, too. And it's another reason that why it's important to have this a public street. And eventually, too, there is other potentially developable property across this flood control swale. So it makes sense for a lot of reasons to have this be a public road.
Perfect. And if Brendan saw it when it was under construction, he knows that the subgrade's good. That's perfect.
It's probably better constructed than the majority of our existing city roads.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public, Tiana? I don't see raised hands.
I don't see any as well.
All right, we'll close public comment.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17 and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Tiana.
Resolution 2021-17, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving an amendment to the Avery Court subdivision to change the road from private to public and remove the Road Maintenance District. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to council review and discussion of planning commission application and mayor's appointment of the seat. I am, we do have a vacancy from a resignation on our planning commission. And we received one application. Tiana, am I supposed to do this? Are you doing this?
You're fine.
Okay, Mike Wells applied. Some of you may remember that he was on the planning commission before. He resigned in order to be a part-time city employee, which he enjoyed fully, but now has officially retired from that and is interested in serving the community again. So after talking to Mike and Liz and basing my decision on his previous experience and this is decision-making abilities and process, I think that Mike would be a good addition to our commission at this time. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I worked with Mike on the planning commission when I was on the planning commission, and he did a very good job, and I'm very happy to recommend him.
Yeah, I'll I would echo that. I know when he was on the planning commission before, he was very conscientious in the job that he was doing. I've known Mike for over 20 years. And I think he's a great addition to the planning commission.
Let's go ahead. A sec, Mike, let's open public comment just so we have that going while we're talking. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, in my dealings with him, he's very level-headed and conscientious and approaches the his work with a good attitude and thinking it through. So I think he'll be great in that.
All right, anyone else? Seeing no one from the public or any sign from Tiana, we'll close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Tiana.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. So when you see Mike out and about, thank him for stepping up to serve the community once again. We appreciate it. Our next item is just a discussion item to talk about solid waste fees and potential changes. And I think Merritt is going to take this one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Long. See if I can share my screen here. Okay, so I I think I've mentioned in the past in recent presentations about the state passage of SB 1383 and some of the rules that Cal Recycle has put forward about the reduction of organic waste going to the landfill. It's really kind of precipitated a kind of a longer term look at our franchise agreement and also a number of the fees that we charge for solid waste and recycling. And with me on the presentation today, Aaron Felley, our Finance Director, has been a lot of help in looking at a lot of the financial information provided by Recology. And then also Linda Wise from Recology. She, it's a it's a difficult task to incorporate various fees into the solid weights, the solid waste and recycling rate schedule. So Recology handles a lot of that work. And then Aaron and I have been proposing what some of the changes should be and then reviewing, reviewing, been in a more of a review capacity on this. So both Linda and Aaron are on the meeting tonight, and they will be available to answer questions as well. In the staff report, there's a few different types of fees that I'll be bringing to the council with the recommendation for including in the near future at our next meeting on June 7th. And one of those is the local enforcement authority fee, household hazardous, a fee for household hazardous waste, an adjustment to the recycling rate, an increase to the city franchise fee and typical annual collection disposal adjustments that are based off the Consumer Price Index. And I'm going to go through each one of these in in detail. And I want to just say that we really wanted to give, have this as a discussion item tonight so that the public would could be made aware of what we're looking at and on an agenda where there isn't an action. And then we could bring it back for council action at the next meeting. And we understand solid waste rates affect a lot of people. And we wanted to make sure to over communicate this rather than under communicate it and give people a chance to weigh in. So the local enforcement authority fee. In 1989, the California Integrated Waste Management Act required cities to have a certified local enforcement authority. And the city with Resolution 92-23 designated Humboldt County Environment Health, Environmental Health as the LEA with the resolution. I put the title there and went back and found that a lot of the solid waste work, it's been shared between general services, city managers. And it's it's taken a lot of work over the last several months to really find and get up to speed on everything related to solid waste rates. So what does a local enforcement authority do? They oversee the state mandated mandated regulatory programs, and they permit, inspect and enforce state and specific local standards for solid waste facilities, including transportation, transfer stations and various recycling facilities. The County Board of Supervisors establishes a rate which they charge, and they currently charge $3.13 per ton of solid waste generated within the City of Fortuna. And the Board of Supervisors also has the authority to adjust those fees. But one of the, it's really a two-step process to incorporate this. Even though the Board of Supervisors can adjust that rate, only the City Council can authorize a pass-through of the fee to ratepayers. And through a number of city managers and public work staff, the county has been requesting for some time that the city pay this LEA fee. And it really hasn't come to the council until now. I did ask our city attorney to review the relevant documents, public resource code and Integrated Waste Management Act. And he concurred that yes, this the city should be paying this fee. So if we do add the fee of $3.13 per ton generated within the city, if you look at the highlight portion in red, and this is kind of a look ahead about, this this chart shows the various increases that we'll be talking about tonight. For, you can see on the left-hand side, on the left-hand column. And then across the top, you can see those are just some of the standard service types. At the end of the presentation, I'll be showing all of the different types of services and what the cost implications of all these potential changes are to each different types of service. But this is really just to give a representative example. So if you can see, there's a 20-gallon container, the top left, and a 32-gallon. I'd say the 32-gallon is probably your most common residential size that's picked up on a weekly basis. So in the red box, I'll put a red box around the fee that's going to, the amount that each, the rates will increase as a result of each one of these fees that we're talking about. So the first one, the local enforcement authority fee, would increase a 20-gallon weekly service by 14 cents and a two-yard by 2.89 and a 32-gallon service by about 23 cents a month. The next fee that we want to consider and will be recommending that the council include is a fee for household hazardous rate waste. The city really hasn't, doesn't do a lot of household hazardous waste programs in the past. The city would get grants or occasionally pick up, would would provide a collection point for household hazardous waste and then transport it offsite. But it was a huge task for the city. Really, the only thing that we're doing right now is we're collecting batteries in City Hall. We've received a number of calls from people who want to be able to participate in Humboldt Waste Management Authority's Household Hazardous Waste Program. We've received a number of calls from people who want to be able to participate in Humboldt Waste Management Authority's Household Hazardous Waste Program and, and have a place to take their waste. One of the big ones that's really coming up now is the state recently reclassified pressure-treated wood waste as hazardous waste. And so as a part of the Household Hazardous Waste Program, Humboldt Waste Management Authority accepts hundred and twenty-five pounds of treated wood waste. So they have a pretty good program and it, I think it makes a lot more sense to participate in an established program and I think that ultimately that will recall, will require um, the Waste Management Authority's approval, but indications from the executive director that the city would be able to participate at the same rate of all the other HWMA members, really because that, that's a self-sustaining program. So it would include the ability for homeowners to take up to fifteen gallons of household hazardous waste, paint, cleaning products, pressure-treated wood, used oil and filters, batteries, e-waste, fluorescent bulbs, used oil and filters. So there's, I think, a lot of folks are prob- from Fortuna are probably going to the Waste Management Authority now and giving them a different address or finding another way to get in there. So I think this is about the city taking responsibility and providing a viable option for household hazardous waste. Cost is six twenty-two per ton of solid waste generated. It would be paid to Humboldt Waste Management Authority based on that tonnage. And it would increase um, the solid, the recycling and garbage fees by between one point one and three point six percent depending on the size of the service. So in the red box that we went over before, you can see it would raise a twenty-gallon can customer to, by twenty-eight cents a month and a thirty-two gallon can customer by forty-five cents a month. Recycling processing fee. So this one's, it's a little tricky to understand and I expect that there might be some questions, but in accordance with the franchise agreement, the rate for recycling can only be adjusted by the Consumer Price Index or approved administratively by city staff for, by up to three percent annually. In two thousand nineteen, Linda Wise and Recology made a presentation to the council explaining the crash of the recycling market and projecting what fees would be necessary in order to um, to, for them to uh, remain viable, to be able to provide recycling service for the city. And they requested a ten percent rate increase, which was approved and effective July first, twenty nineteen. As a part of that, um, their projection at the time, Recology projected about one thousand nine hundred and forty-two tons of recycling, but the actual end up coming, coming in lower uh, at around fourteen hundred and forty-five tons. And then twenty twenty, they projected what they received the prior year, fourteen forty-five, they came in at one thousand ninety-one tons. So working with Recology and, and Recology, um, identifying this reduction in the overall tonnage, the, the rates were higher than they needed. So in twenty nineteen, over a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars was collected more than was necessary in that year. And although there's not a provision in the franchise agreement to go back and adjust these on a actual volume basis, it's something that we're gonna be, or excuse me, actual mass basis, it's something that we're gonna be considering in, in the next franchise agreement. If we didn't do something like that in the future, then we might have a situation like this where the amount we actually produce goes down and we're still paying a much higher fee. So other local jurisdictions do have that kind of prorata um, fee and, and the city at this point does not. So the hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar credit for the significant reduction in recyclables um, is being held. We expect that there will be an increase necessary when we have to provide all our customers with, all the city's customers and potentially go to universal service. And everybody have, uh, provide everybody with bins for green waste and the other recyclables, recyclables and solid waste. Uh, additionally, uh, there is an adjustment to a fee at the processing facility. So um, the, the cost for the process, for the sorting of recyclables did go up as well. And so as a part of the recommended increase, we'll see an increase for the cost of materials that are dropped off at that processing facility. I'm gonna pause for a second. Linda, did you want to say anything um, on this slide? There's, there's kind of a lot here or I can keep moving forward and you can come in at the end with questions?
Yeah, I think I'll wait until questions. I think you got it pretty well, Merritt.
So as we looked at with the others, the impact to rates, um, again, a pretty significant reduction in volume. So what we see is about a ninety-five percent, ninety-five cent reduction uh, to the monthly bill for a twenty-gallon, a dollar nine reduction for thirty-two gallon and a five dollar eighty-three cent reduction. So again, we're holding on to a credit for year two thousand um, nineteen, but this rate would actually um, be a reduction and it would help to offset the cost for some of the other fees that we're talking about. So the annual collection um, disposal fee adjustments, I, I mentioned this earlier, but there's a number of uh, adjustments that are made on an annual basis based on the Consumer Price Index and also um, to account for the increased costs of tipping fees at landfills and the actual cost of the solid waste collection by Recology. So those increases are built in automatically, as I mentioned earlier. The C, the, the staff can approve those administratively up to three percent. Anything exceeds three percent uh, goes to the council. So there are some of the elements of the collection and disposal that went up in accordance with that, consistent with the Consumer Price Index that we'll be bringing back with the fee increase. And those are more routine increases that we normally see every year. Most of the time, they don't make them to council. So just to now, uh, to, to show where those um, fees, uh, again, you can see it, there's, there's two rows here. The top row is with the actual cost of the disposal uh, and the landfill costs are, and then the CPI increase covers the, the collection by Recology. And so it's a little over fifty cents for a twenty-gallon service, about sixty-five for a thirty-two and um, about a little over three dollars for a two-yard bin. So a franchise fee increase. Cities charge a franchise fee as a percentage of the total solid waste fees. Traditionally, they've been treated as a general revenue and not limited to use for solid waste-related activities. There are some cases going through that suggest that so far they haven't ruled in favor of this, but they suggest that they could be viewed as a, as a um, assessment benefit and fall under Prop two eighteen. The city is using its solid waste fees that it does collect, its franchise fee for solid waste purposes. And the city also has a, a smaller um, actual solid waste fee that they charge as well. And I'll, I'll give a little more detail on that. But currently, the city's solid waste fee is five percent. The proposal that we will be bringing back at the next council meeting is to increase it to nine percent. Currently, as a comparison with other local agencies, the city of Eureka and Humboldt County, they charge nine percent and Arcata franchise fee is ten percent. And then the C, City of Rodeo, which I suspect they will be updating this as they get into their, that new franchise agreement, which are considering or out, they're currently three, but I suspect that they'll be increasing that as well. And I don't know, Linda, uh, when we get to Q and A, if, if you know more about that, maybe you could share that with the council. But what would the franchise fee increase do? It would um, it would increase the revenue generated uh, from solid waste fees from about eighty thousand to a hundred and forty-four thousand, which would be a net increase of somewhere between sixty and seventy. And those are sixty or seventy thousand. Some of the things that we're thinking about that those funds could be used for, um, we, we know that we're going to have costs for SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. Uh, some of the key costs that are gonna be coming up is we're working with the other, other local agencies to try to identify a long-term organic waste disposal option. And so right now, we're looking at different consultants and sharing those costs with, throughout the region to have those consultants identify a long-term plan for SB thirty, thirteen eighty-three compliance with the larger task being citing a, uh, organics recycling facility. And we're also considering spending some money and having consultant work with all the agencies, much like we did with the LID, the Humboldt County Low Impact Development Manual to kind of come up with these programs on more of a region-wide basis than each agency going alone. So initially, this would provide about forty thousand for SB thirteen eighty-three compliance. Um, one of the other uses, again, this is more just to justify and ultimately a resolution would have to justify what we're using these funds for, just so we, we wouldn't fall under two eighteen or, or jeopardize um, that. But uh, it, we also spend about forty-four thousand dollars annually for street sweeping. Our finance director and, and general service superintendent came up with that today. So we have a lot of uses for those funds, um, if we do collect them. And this would be a good time to do it as we're seeing that recycling rate go down and it would offset this increase. And also, there's a smaller fee. Um, right now, it's called a transfer station fee and that generates approximately twenty thousand. So we need to think about um, whether or not we, we call it a franchise fee or a, or a transfer station solid waste fee. And we do have an existing one and, and that's something that we'll have to figure out if we retain that and make an additive franchise fee increase or if we combine them into one. But that, that fee was established in two thousand. It hasn't been updated for over twenty years with the purpose of administration of solid waste programs, uh, curb gutter and sidewalk cleaning, litter abatement, uh, city enforcement program and household hazardous waste program. This comes up to a dollar fifteen a ton and they're woefully inadequate to be able to provide the services that are included here. And just as an example, you know, if you compare this dollar fifteen to the actual cost of HWMA's Household Hazardous Waste Program, you know, a dollar fifteen doesn't get us anywhere close to what these things are listed here. So this really is in need of an update. So how would increasing this franchise fee um, affect rates? Again, it, it's very close to what the reduction in, or the decrease uh, would be from the recycling process fee. So it would uh, increase the, the twenty-gallon service about ninety-six cents a month and a dollar eleven for a thirty-two gallon and a two-yard about six sixty-two. So you can see the total increase at the bottom. You know, for these are, again, these are just a few um, more common services that people have. But anywhere for the, you know, the household stuff for a twenty, thirty-two or forty-five, between ninety-nine cents and a dollar eighty-two. And then as you start getting into the bins, because they have a higher, there's, there's more weight that's associated with those bins, you end up having a higher cost. And so those would go up by six forty-one or twelve seventy-six. And here's an overall picture of the rates. Let me explain what these, this, this includes all the fee changes that we talked about so far. But the blue number is, a- and you can see here, the blue numbers are what is existing now and the black at the bottom is what would be proposed. So these, this is the whole realm of services and rates, uh, the, the rate schedule for solid waste and recycling. Some of these lines you can see here, there's two, two numbers that could be confusing, but you can see it's, if people have a, a twice-weekly service or a once-weekly service, there's different rates for a higher frequency of pickup. So I'll give you a minute just to take a look at these rates, but um, you need to see a bag service goes up by about thirty-one cents and um, recycling goes up by about sixteen cents. Uh, again, I'm doing quick math, so don't hold me to that. But you can see it goes up, up, about a dollar for a twenty-gallon can and on a weekly basis, uh, a, a little over a dollar for a thirty-two gallon can. Uh, let's see. And again, these are just uh, additional cans on the right, but you could, I think it's just relevant to look at the, the one-can price. And you can see forty-five gallon can, it goes from thirty-six ninety-six. And that one, that seems strange. It actually, oh yeah, it goes up, uh, uh, from thirty-six ninety-six to thirty-eight seventy-eight. And then for a larger one-yard bin, it goes from eighty dollars to eighty-seven. So you see the bins and the higher mass um, options, they go up significantly more just because they, they do generate more waste and a lot of those fees are based on the tonnage. And then the recycling bins, you can see that the cost actually um, goes down. So um, when does that? I think that's accurate. So we go from thirty-one oh two to thirty ninety-nine and that must reflect the drop in the tonnage that we're expecting in, in the different bin units. So again, a lot of work goes into these and um, you know, again, Erin, our fin- Felley, our finance director, and I have been reviewing this with Recology, but there's a lot of data that goes into getting these rates correct. And I think we're on like our fifth or sixth round of reviewing and looking at these rates. We feel pretty comfortable with what they've put together here. So what would the next steps be to incorporate these fees? Um, again, staff is proposing to bring these to the next regular council meeting on June seventh. And each one of these would require certain findings to be made by way of resolution. And then we'd have to follow those through with an amendment to the franchise agreement to, to just capture memorialize things, the, the fees that would be passed through. And if there's um, and I would work with our city attorney to develop those um, resolutions and findings. There'd be a ten-day public notice in advance of the next meeting. And then the longer-term goal is compliance with Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. That's required by January first, twenty twenty-two. So although we're talking about tonight raising these fees at our next meeting uh, for July first, w- we almost immediately will be continuing to work on updates to the city's uh, ordinance for solid waste to incorporate the new organic recycling requirements and reuse requirements and then also to uh, update the franchise agreement. And we've been having talks with a number of the other agencies and have forwarded some questions to Cal Recycle. And the indication is now that they will be, you know, that, that universal collection and, which means having the three-bin system of solid waste recycling and organic waste collection, which is including green waste and food waste, will be required as part of the rules for SB thirteen eighty-three. And we have asked about that specifically. So my intention now is to start going through the franchise agreement and making those edits to consider how we bring that um, how we bring that forward to meet that. And I think the things that we'll have to have in place, because we do not have a, a, a disposal option for organics, is we will have to have the ordinance in place, is my understanding. And we'll have to have the franchise agreement in place. And if we have a scope of work and a schedule for a long-term organics recycling reuse facility, even if it's not done, if we have the schedule for that, then we'll be deemed to be in compliance. So that's what we're really going towards to avoid fines and impose schedules by Cal Recycle. We're trying to stay ahead of it. So it's gonna take a lot of work between now and the end of the year to get there. So with that, um, that concludes the presentation part of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or Linda, do you have anything that you want to add to that? Or, or Erin, if you want to jump in there, feel free.
I have to say that probably all three of us are looking forward to a, a different way of presenting rates in the future. I mean, because the different, definitely are difficult to understand in the way that they're presented. But thank you for that, Merritt.
Lot of information.
You're breaking in and out, Sue.
Am I? Hi, good move. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for either Merritt or Linda?
I have a question. Um, on that rate chart, currently the recycle bin is included in your garbage charge. Will that stay the same or was that separate price for the recycle bin gonna be added on to the garbage can fee?
There, there's a rate for people who get an additional can. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I do, I have a couple of comments. Um, I really appreciate the slide with all the new fees, the breakdown for the different cans and that, that really helps. There's a lot of information here um, in the report as well as the printed um, report. You guys did a great job breaking it down, but there's so much information here. It's really difficult for my little brain to try to glean um, actual ac- action that we need, the city council needs to take up. Um, and, and so kind of bear with me. I, I, I think I've got five, kind of five bullet points here. Just to summarize, just so I have in my own mind what we're doing here over the next year or several years. Um, one would be to update the city's solid waste franchise fee and agreement, and that's going to be taken up in the next council meeting, from what I understand. And then a reduction of organic waste that must be in place, at least the plan must be in place by one-one of twenty twenty-two. And then in relation to that, establish an im- implementation plan to develop an organic waste recycling option. And then the city must decide how to deal with household hazardous waste disposal, um, maybe through Humboldt Waste Management Authority. And then lastly, generate additional revenue for routine solid waste activities that the city is involved in, like um, street sweeping, removing trash from gutters and drainage implements and managing that, uh, those activities that the city is involved in with regard to solid waste. Those are kind of the five bullet points that I've drawn in. Those are kind of the five bullet points that I've drawn in from your presentation as well as the written report.
Yeah. I think I understand the question. So maybe I could just kind of provide a short summary of what I think our next steps are and, and the two steps that we're taking. One. Would be increasing the fees now and then what kind of the next step would be after that?
Good.
Okay. So yeah, so what we're, we're talking about tonight and what would come to the council next week is. Really just the adjustment of fees. We're not talking, you know, in, in, in order to adjust those fees. We would have to have a resolution explaining why we're doing that. And then we'd have to have, I would consider it a minor uh revision to the franchise agreement just to reflect those changed fees. And so we're looking at the local enforcement authority fee as a responsibility that we have under um the Public Resources Code to. Provide and pay for that enforcement. That's what that fee is for. The household hazardous waste and, and that one's really not optional. It's something we need to be doing. So there's not really a decision that I see, but it is the council passing through. Authorizing that fee to be passed through to our customers. Um, the household hazardous waste fee, that is an option. We don't have to do that. And I, I just think it is important for the citizens to be able to have a place to take those household hazardous wastes. That are generated. And right now, one of two things is happening. People are throwing them in the trash where they shouldn't go. Or they're disposing of that HWMA without paying what that real cost for that program are. So. We think it's important to have a viable option and to be responsible to have the, an option for our citizens to dispose of those wastes. The recycling rate adjustment, it's kind of two parts. One is, you know, some of the, you know, the increase for the, the cost at the. The processing facility where they sort all that, that again, there's, there's a, there's a increase for that. But there's a, a very significant decrease for based on the tonnages. So what we would have as a part of the. Again, adjusting the fees is we would reduce the recycling fee and we'd recognize the credit. For the estimate that was over what the actual costs were. So again, we're just trying to straighten out a lot of these fees. The franchise fee, that's really looking at a revenue generation. Fee for the city to pay for solid waste work. And the two big things that we see. Right now, one of them is we need some funding to be able to participate. In the regional effort to comply with SB thirteen eighty three. And then the second part is, you know, as a council saw recently in our budget, the city undertakes a number of activities to. Deal with solid waste in the city and probably the largest effort of that is to have the street sweeping uh on a regular basis. And so we think it's important that. We capture enough, you know, the, 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 the small amount that was in the existing fee is not enough to, to, to pay for that. So. We think it's important that um we have the funding to deal with that solid waste issue from where it should come from, the solid waste fee. So that's it. So the next part would be so. For the bigger picture, longer term is almost strictly SB thirteen eighty three compliance, which there's a number, you know, I do have some slides. I don't want to bring them up tonight because I think it would confuse it, but. It's a very significant effort the city is going to make, have to make to. To reroute food from even going into the waste and then find and, you know, and then to be, to regulate it and enforce those SB thirteen eighty three goals. Within the city, they've made the city the enforcement for that. And then also to work to establish a viable alternative for um disposing of that organic waste. Right now, there's nowhere for it to go, even if we collected it. So um. That we will have to do an ordinance to require people to um. Recycle, to, to re- to recycle or reuse that organic waste and participate in those programs. And we'll have to update the franchise agreement to incorporate universal collection. And I understand the council. Wants to know a hundred percent that, you know, that's not staff interpretation. They want to hear from Cal Recycle. So we'll make sure to bring. You know, the, the, the justification for making that change. And I think we'll ask, we may ask Cal Recycle to even participate because I like the ca- council to hear from. The state that the, you know, these are things that are absolutely required and not something that staff is interpreting in that way.
Well, and historically, um, the cities opted out of the hazardous waste disposal through Humboldt Waste Management. Well, there's got to be someplace where we can dispose of that, those um items. So. Thank you, Merritt.
Merritt, I have one more question.
Sure.
Um, I've been hearing from different people of why can't you put food in land waste? Because it's bio degradable and it's like compost. Can you explain that, please?
Yeah, I mean, it gets into the science of it. It's interesting. You know, I, I think what um they're saying is that if you recycle it. Or have somebody else eat it, it's not being wasted and decomposing and creating methane or other greenhouse gases. So. I, I can't give you, I mean, the, the argument is why did they pass SB thirteen eighty three? And I think the thought is if you can generate less food waste and you can reuse the food that's there that you. Overall, you'll have a reduction in greenhouse gases, but ultimately whether somebody eats it or if it goes into the ground, it's still going to create that waste. But I think. The, the primary goal of SB thirteen eighty three is to reduce the generation of more food if you can reuse what's there or recycle it into compost. And, and not have it go to greenhouse gases. So that's really a state level policy decision and I don't have an answer better than that for you.
Okay, but it doesn't make sense. Your rotten food from your refrigerator, you can't reuse.
But what they, what they want to see is it transferred, you know, really transitioned into a form of compost that can be put onto agricultural fields or otherwise reused, much like the city's solid waste. Yeah, it's, it's a statewide policy decision again. And, and we're doing our best to comply with the rules that the state put into place to further that goal. And Linda raising her hand, she might have a better answer.
Yeah, and also I've had another comment, uh, another, another thing that plays into the uh climate control. Greenhouse gases is the transportation of that material to a landfill. Which are actually, you know, they're, they're limited in the space and how much they can take in tons um for that. And with population growth, they're, they're also worried about, you know, having enough. Landfill space for materials that can't be composted. So part of what's playing into that is also the admissions from the trucks going all the way to the landfill because we take our material three hundred miles round trip. So that's, that's one of the considerations that they have built into this climate change bill.
Thanks, Linda. Brendan, did you have a comment too? I saw you unmute there.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to jump in with there is I, I think the other thing they're looking at is being able to use that product. To make compost, which ultimately offsets energy in, in other ways. You know, you can make a resource or you can. Harvest energy out of what ultimately otherwise is a waste product. And. A lot of the time, if that ends up in the landfill, it co-mingles with other types of waste that. You know, ultimately produce other toxic like materials that have to get treated otherwise with specialized treatment systems sometimes. So I think it's a way to isolate out what otherwise is a non-toxic material. And to have a little bit better treatment out of it and some other energy recovery. So there's a lot of other little nexus items where it's. Certainly better to treat it that way. And the long term, it is less impactful if you can successfully isolate it and treat it separately.
Anyone else? I know we do have a member of the public waiting to speak.
Um, I have a question, but I can wait for public if you want.
Go ahead.
Two things. Uh, number one, with this potential rate increase on June seventh. There's not going to be another ask come Ju- uh, January twenty twenty two, is there?
I think the biggest change would be, there will be another ask in that the other ask is going to be. An ordinance and probably a major update to the franchise agreement to comply with SB thirteen eighty three. And I, and, and I don't have a draft. We're working on one of those right now, but one of the things that we'll want to look at is. You know, how, how do we do our rates in general? Do we want to look at it on a, you know, per mass basis and then do an adjustment based on actual? You know, things like requiring the three bin system. So there's going to be, you know, it's the, the one we're working on has been. I think since nineteen ninety five, so it's, it's out of date. And so I think we'll want to really think about how we um. Really try to just. Develop a franchise agreement that suits where we're at now and the services we need now, as well as allowing for an adjustment based on, you know, the real. Amounts of waste that we're generating, whether, you know, in this, like the case we have now where it could go down, or if we start generating a lot more, it goes up. It's. It allowed, you know, if we have to have a, a flat rate like we do now with just CPI adjustments, then. We're always going to see an overestimation when we go to negotiate those rates, but I think we can have a, a more accurate rate if we base it on um actual volumes and audits of our waste generated. So we're not going to come back and look to add more fees, but I think our structure for those fees may be different. And there may be some additional work that we have to do and fund, but if we did go to universal collection, you'd see the same fee applied to more users. And I think that would generate more than enough revenue. So it wouldn't increase the individual customer, but citywide, it would increase if we do bring in more customers in and require more customers to participate in solid waste. And recycling service.
Okay. And so how long is that potential franchise agreement good for? How often do you do this?
Well, we've been, me, this is my first time. But the city uh has been in the same franchise agreement with various extensions since nineteen ninety five and it goes to twenty twenty five. So. I think that is a bit on the long end, and I think a lot of times you want to see him at, at a minimum on a ten year basis, which is the general depreciation time you have for a lot of the equipment, a, a waste. Collection um provider would be purchasing. So probably between ten and twenty years would be my kind of guess at answer. I don't know if Linda has something more accurate than that.
You, you're right. You know, ten, you, you couldn't really do ten years, uh, under ten years and be able to fund the, the programs without having huge rate increases. This is a way to kind of like level out the costs.
So what I heard you say though, is that your January ask won't be another individual. Rate increase.
I don't think we'll be proposing to raise any of the fees we're talking about now, but what may happen if we are, you know, if, if, if we're required to go to universal collection, as I understand it. Right, right now, uh, you know, I think we have less than half of the city that participates in garbage service. And so we'd add another half. And. So you'd see the amount of money the city collects that we'd have for SB thirteen eighty three compliance be more. But it would, my hope would be to not have the individual rate go up. But again, we may not use the exact same structure that we have. Now, so it might, it might be different, but I don't anticipate these fees being requested to be raised again. But how we charge them and how we define those services. We could lump them or split them again. That's going to be up to the council. So really the council will have to say how we do this and whether we raise them or how we consult, if we consolidate recycling and solid waste and green waste. The council's going to have the different options of how we do things, but I, we're not, we don't want to see the rates go up. We're try- our goal is to try to keep them the same as they are and comply with thirteen eighty three. With this increase, but again, that's going to be a, a, a council driven process.
Okay. I'm curious to know how we're going to enforce mandatory garbage collection. Maybe that's for a different conversation now.
Yeah, I, I contemplated how deep we went into this. We could literally, this is taking a lot of my time now and, and I think. When we come back and start talking about SB thirteen eighty three in more depth, that'll be the time to discuss that.
Okay.
Yana, can you connect our caller, please?
So I see there's a caller on the line. The number is six eight two six zero three nine. And if you have a public comment, now would be the time to unmute. If you'd like to make a public comment.
If you'd like to make a public comment.
Hello.
Hi, is that Walt?
This is Walt.
Hi Walt, can you do me a favor? Can you mute your television in the background?
Yes, I can. Hang on a second here. I, I'm, I'm muted.
Okay, there, you're good.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hello, honorable mayor, council members, staff. How is everyone? Good, I hope. Um, I'm glad we have Merritt and Aaron to wade through this waste issue. I for one am lost in the forest. However, I did, I do have a question that maybe uh Jeremy answered kind of for me. And that is, is Fortuna going to go to mandatory waste collection? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I, I can just answer that question. I see Sue stepped away, so Mayor Pro Tem, if, if, if you would like me to answer, Sue, if you'd like me to. Mayor Long, if you'd like me to answer that question.
Yes, please. My little dog was asking that.
Yeah. So, Miss, Mr. Wilson, um, we expect that uh as we move towards the implementation to comply with SB thirteen eighty three, the state is telling us that universal collection is required. And so um we're starting that process to revise the franchise agreement and move towards that. And yes, is a short answer.
All right. Does anyone else from the council have any other comments? Walt, are you done? Did he leave us? Okay.
I have one. And it doesn't have to go into detail. I just want to know if there's been a discussion regionally. On at least a concept level of how we're going to deal with thirteen eighty three.
Yeah, I think we, we have an ad hoc committee of the solid waste, uh, the local solid waste task force and, and so far. Everybody seems to want to a- attack it together and, and work on it together. And I think. We've reviewed scope of work from a couple of different consultants that really kind of outline the steps that we need to follow and. More comprehensive, we're, we're leaning to, I think, towards a more comprehensive. You know, what's the entire range of things we have to do than just picking out one thing or another. So. Yes, we are looking at that with, and working cooperatively with the other agencies and. Right now, it, it seems like the other agencies want to work together as well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that was quite a long discussion item. Does anyone else have anything to add before we move on? Linda, thank you for being here tonight to help answer our questions. We appreciate it.
It's a pleasure being here. Thanks.
All right. See you next thing. Okay, Merritt, you again. City managers report.
You're muted.
Thank you, Siana. Our next council meeting is on June seventh and that's at six o'clock PM and that'll be, be a teleconference again. Our next planning commission is on May twenty fifth, also at six o'clock PM. And then our met- next measuring is still uh weighs out on September twenty first at five thirty and our next RONER Community Recreation and Park District meeting is on June second. At two thirty PM. Just a, a few things uh for my verbal report is we. Worked on earmarks for the 12th Street and Kenmore Interchanges and submitted, made submittals to Senator Feinstein and Huffman. And we are working on getting a letter of support uh for that project and, and submitting that to Padilla. And I, I sent out an email to the council and I just want to let the council know that we did complete the demolition on Acacia, twenty three eight eighty six Acacia, the. House that's been a nuisance and ultimately caught on fire and was red tagged and was determined that it needed to be torn down. So that was torn down. Our code compliance officer talked with the county and that property is four years delinquent. And so at five years, the county typically goes to. A lien sale. So my hope is that we'll be able to recover our revenue sooner than later due to the already four year outstanding debt. So. I guess that's a positive thing about putting that money in. They're so far behind that we may see our money back quicker if that property goes to a sale. And our deputy city engineer and I presented to the Farm Bureau and the United, the Western United Dairy Producers. There was a number of folks interested on the Farnale side about the city's plans for our wastewater. Treatment and disposal project. And so we gave a very comprehensive presentation to those groups over there. And then um we, we are making some modifications. There's some um joints that we are looking to seal on Jamison Creek, although the project's done. You may notice some activity happening there, but we're going to divert it. And there's some of the, some of the uh. Joints between the precast sections, we want to seal what, so we don't have an interaction between groundwater and the surface water going through the culvert, but we hope to wrap that up fairly soon. And Mercer Frazier is going out to. Complete that work. It's still an open contract and we're still using grant funds for that, so no city funds. And then one of the other things, I did have some voluntary assistance from the Chamber of Commerce uh and other interested parties and. We may be considering uh how. Um, we may be considering uh, how best to get the public input regarding um, updated cannabis ordinance. So before we do anything, I'll come back to the council, but. We did develop a draft questionnaire and are thinking of other things we could do um. Other than hiring a consultant to get the public input in advance of a meeting. Uh, and again, we're not going to be considering that till after June fifteenth. The council expressed pretty clearly they wanted to see that in person and after these COVID restrictions are understood. So. Um, I'll be coming back to the council and, and discussing uh, some public outreach strategies. And I was pleased to get the assistance from uh, the Chamber of Commerce. So that concludes my report.
All right. Thanks, Merritt. Any questions from council for Merritt? Hearing that, we will move on to um, future agenda items. Anything? I think we have lots of stuff to work on, so I don't need to add anymore. All right, city council reports, Mike Johnson.
Uh, I'd be a short one again this week. Did, uh, did have a historical commission meeting. Uh, some of the discussion and work involved around the, the new uh. Rodeo memorial book, the hundredth anniversary and the. Book will be ready for distribution around the same time as the rodeo. It's already been submitted to the printer. It's been formatted. I believe that if I remember right, there's over seven hundred pictures in it. Um, some from the National Rodeo Hall of Fame with Fortuna writers in it. Other items were the accessions and de-accessions, which I thought was funny because the only. Two items that were on there were from a board member and myself. I had a, an old trivet. It's also a food warmer that's from the forties. And it was brand new still in the box and she latched on to that. And another board member brought in uh, record books from the Catholic Daughters of America that will be. Put into the book category. And this week I have a HCOG board meeting on Thursday. With a variety of things, including RSTP distribution, uh, consultant. Uh, contract for the call boxes, also known as Safe Service Authority for freeway emergency. For their maintenance and upkeep, which as you can imagine, becomes pretty highly needed thing in some of the remote areas. And uh, and our regional transportation plan update and the overall work plan. Which is the work plan for the HCOG and the budget for the coming year. So some important stuff coming up and that's, I'll report out on the outcome of that next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, our next, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I haven't had a meeting since our last council meeting. So mine's going to be short as well. I have a LAFCO meeting on Wednesday, the nineteenth coming up. We're going to be discussing several items, uh, one of them, an annexation in the Mitchell Heights area of Eureka. And then on May twenty-seventh, Thursday, I have an RCEA meeting. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Jeremy.
Uh, FBID has not met since we've last met. Um, we're hoping to meet again this Thursday. Um. And then regarding the Parks and Rec, I'm going to hit a few highlights of the staff report that was given to us in our meeting so I can share with the public. But um, as of April twenty-six, the park office has been able to rent outdoor spaces. And they put the picnic benches back underneath the cook shack awning so that people can access that facility. Um, that is only with uh, COVID nineteen release waiver form. And the appropriate insurances as which is, which is typical. Um, city staff has been working hard on um, working up the infields and putting, applying red rock to all of our. Baseball diamonds and facilities and they look awesome. And it's so great to see all those kids out there playing ball. Uh, so nice to see some, some, so normal when it comes to our recreation department. They've been hard at work fixing up uh, fire damage to the east side of the Monday Club. Finally got that all taken care of and some trim boards taken care of there. Um, it's amazing the bullet point tasks that these guys accomplish each month that just go unnoticed. So. Would like to give a shout out to all those uh, Parks and Rec facility workers that make all those things remain seamless. So we can all enjoy our parks. Uh, the, the museum is open uh, and had a hundred and one visitors last April. So down from typical years, of course, but uh, we're hoping to increase that. There's a new exhibit on display called The Way We Were nineteen twenty-one. And uh, one last thing I'll report on is that. The first week in May was the opening registration for Kitty Camp coming up for this summer, summer fun program. Uh, beginnings um, June twenty-first and running through August twentieth. So for those that need summer fun or um, childcare during the summer months, uh, you can go to the Parks Office now and sign up. Lastly, I'll let you know that we do still have a vacancy on the FBID board. Uh, we haven't met since last meeting for lack of a quorum. So. We are in desperate need of people that are enthusiastically energetic and come and want to be involved in our business community. So. If there's anybody that can uh, make time in their day for this worthwhile organization, we'd appreciate it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
Thank you. I don't have a lot to report, except I do want to say how exciting it is to drive by the parks and see all the baseball going on and all the little kids laughing and having a good time. They are, they've started football signups for youth football and they've started soccer signups for youth um, soccer. So I'm just so happy to see the kids back and being able to play sports again and enjoying themselves and see, hearing them laughing and seeing them smile. So that's all I have to report.
Thanks, Tammy. I've got four grandsons playing, so I've been spending lots of time at the ballpark and it's. Fun just to go there if your kids aren't playing because it is normal, the most normal part of anything we've got going in our city right now. So it's. Just refreshing to go there. Um. You guys didn't have very long reports, but the council has been busy. So we've had two budget workshops since our last council meeting. We did have a prayer rally that um, a couple of other council members were attended as well. Um, it rained, but in spite of that, people pulled out their umbrellas and stuck around and. I'm hoping to make that an annual event in the city. Um, a couple of us were on a Zoom meeting with um, Assembly Member Jim Woods, talking about bills that are problematic to the city. Um, some of the housing bills, some of the police bills, um, the budget and different things. So it was nice to um, interact with him for a little bit. We do have our League of California Cities, or CalCities as they're being called now, um. Committee workshops or our Redwood Empire Division meeting this Friday. And then we have our committee workshops the following Thursday and Friday. So we'll be interacting a lot with um, the League of California Cities in the next couple of weeks. Um, my redact meeting for May is canceled, so that will help with all of these other meetings. And I think that is it for me. So thank you all for sticking around. This was kind of a long one. And we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All in favor? I.
Hi.
All right. Thanks, you guys.